This is Alicia Greco, Vice Chair of the Newbury Select Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Michael Doyle, no, I don't think he's here yet. Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
JR Colby? I don't think he's yet here yet either. Hey, staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Tracy Blazetown Administrator?
Yes.
Julie O'Brien, Executive Administrator?
Yes.
Martha Taylor, Planning Director?
Yes.
Leslie Haley, Town Clerk?
Yes.
Mark Smigleski, Newbury Police? Not yet. And John Lucy, Chief of Police? Not yet. Anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Robin Lawson, Cultural Council Chair? She was here.
She's up there.
There she is, yeah. She's waving. TJ Melvin, Millennium Engineering?
Yeah.
Tim Snay, Ransom Consulting?
Present.
Marshall Jesperson, Finance Committee? Not yet. Linda Allen, Finance Committee? Not yet. Tom Howard, Finance Committee? Not yet, Tom. Joe Ali, Finance Committee? Kavya Sear, Finance Committee? Dean Case, Finance Committee? Erica Jacobson, Finance Committee? I think they're gonna join us a little bit later.
There is somebody here by phone, but not identified.
They're on mute. We'll wait and see. Good evening. This open meeting of the Newbury Select Board is being conducted virtually consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, in the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. The order, which you can find posted on the town's website, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Select Board is convening by Zoom. Meeting link is posted on the agenda on the town's website. All of the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on the website, and we recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted on the website. So we are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business in to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of board members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and be sure to state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in dialogue with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. The chairperson or vice chairperson will afford the public comment for a period of three minutes, and it will be granted as follows. Participation will be sought through the raise hand function. One, for video conference participants, this function can be accessed by clicking on the participants option listed in the menu below the photo gallery. Hover your cursor in this area if you don't see it. A participants window will open and display on the right. On the bottom of this participant area, you will see the list of phone video participants. On the bottom, you will see the ability to click on a button to raise hand. Please ensure your name is displayed. You may rename by using the more function next to your name. Telephone participants can use their phones keypad while in a Zoom meeting to raise hand by hitting star nine. Those who have requested to be heard through the raise hand function will be heard in the order of which they are listed, system lists in order by whom first hit the raise hand function. Please identify yourself by stating your name and address, and then your question or comment. You will be unmuted, and your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. We will continue down the list of those in the raise hand column. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. And I believe the chairman has joined.
Thank you for starting us up, Alicia.
You're welcome.
We had a sidewalk on Plum Island, and I ended up staying quite a lot later than I thought I would. Running from there to here to, it's a stretch between Plum Island and Byfield, so thank you for starting up. Okay, let's move to communications from citizens. Do we have any raised hands?
JR?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Jeff.
Can I suggest that someone call Mike? He might think the meeting's at seven.
Okay. Did someone give Mike a call?
Julie, do you mind?
Yeah, I'm just gonna find his number.
Okay, we'll move to communications from citizens. Do we have any raised hands?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Bob Connors.
Hi, Bob.
Hi, good evening, JR, and members of the Select Board. I just wanted to mention and add comments on the warrant articles being reviewed tonight regarding the revision of wetland bylaw. And one thing I would just suggest is that I'm always cautious, and it's a great concern when we start changing zoning bylaws or wetland bylaws or any other ordinance, before we really have an updated master plan, which identifies how much undeveloped land do we have left and how much higher do we want to raise the bar in cost to the community for simple development. So I just want to add that caution to the Select Board that, you know, getting an updated master plan is, should be a first priority, and quite honestly, we should consider tabling any changes to zoning or bylaws until we have a master plan so that we can do a comparison of what impacts, if any, these changes may have. And, but, thank you, that's all I have to say, JR, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Mr. Chairman, William Demeo?
Hi, Bill.
Hi, I'm Joseph Mayow, 12 Orchard Street, Byfield. I'm just speaking on behalf of the Board of Directors for the Council on Aging about the survey that we're trying to conduct. We mailed out more than 2,000 copies of the survey, and you folks have done a great job publishing it on the town website. As of this morning, we've only had 170 responses. 113 came from the website, and 57 were written ballots, written surveys. So please, when you talk to your friends, relatives, constituents, talk it up, and this is a great chance for people to respond, to tell the Council on Aging what they really want to see and have for a facility in terms of activities, okay? So we just appreciate it if you would just talk that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
I don't see any other raised hands.
Moving on, Chairman's Report. I signed the PR 21-19 for Julie O'Brien. It was a sidewalk today on Plum Island concerning the emergency evacuation route that's proposed with the neighbors. And also, I'm gonna do a little bit more of what I did at the following meeting as I get questions from the public. I try to spread accurate information as much as I can, but in the social media, it's can be hotter than just squashing rumors at the coffee shop. So, the myth, we have two Mythbusters of the Week, I think is what we'll call them. Someone asked me if the Byfield Grange works being performed without a valid building permit. That is false. There is a permit for the project, and there always has been. And also, another question that's been floated, a couple people asked me if the police chief gets a new administrative cruiser, or the new car gets handed down to the, and that car gets handed down to the sergeant, and that's absolutely false. The vehicle that the chief's driving right now is, I think, at least four years old. This is his car from before, this is his deputy chief, and the notion of everyone getting a new car every year is fun to talk about, but absolutely false. So, now that I've dispelled those two, we have grants, gifts, and donations. And, yeah, Mike, yeah?
No, I don't see him.
I called, but his voicemail was full, so he didn't pick up, and his voicemail said it was full.
Okay, I'll just take the light of stuff.
Excuse me, JR, you haven't called with your audio. You're fading in and out. I just called that to your attention.
The packet's so big, I'm spread out here. I'm at kind of a funny angle. Is that?
No, you're still, you're still.
Yeah, you're still breaking up.
As much I can do about it. Let me try and move a little bit here.
I think if you just speak slowly, it might fix itself.
Okay. Under Grants, Gifts, and Donations, an aging donation from David Winters of 25. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle? Not yet. Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. We have a Council on Aging donation from Brittany and Andrew Bowie of 25.
Yeah, I think he's, it sounds like it's already now, but maybe for like.
Motion? Motion to accept.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. We have a library donation, employees of Newbury Port Five Cents Bank, $330.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. Under New Business, we have Town Clerk Leslie Haley with a discussion regarding early voting. Are you ready for us, Leslie?
She's mute.
She's working on it.
Got it. All right, so I'm gonna start with just a brief update from, as soon as today at 5:00, the deadline to return nominations papers has passed. The candidates are now established. However, we are unable to have the ballots printed until April 8th, which is the deadline to object or withdraw a candidacy. So that deadline is April 8th at 5:00 PM. We can hit the go button on having the ballots printed after that time. So a little bit of the background on the legislation that was passed last Wednesday, March 17th, it extended certain temporary provisions that were enacted in 2020 in response to the pandemic. Those provisions have now been amended and/or extended until June 30th. Essentially, with those extensions, the provision to allow those who are taking precautions related to COVID-19 to vote by mail, it has created an equality between absentee and early voting. The legislation has recommended using early and absentee in the header of the ballot. Therefore, we only have to print one ballot rather than two plus the official ballots. The vote by mail ballots have to be requested in writing, either by completing an application or any form of written communication that contains the voter's name, address, date of birth, and signature. The ballots will be mailed to the applicants as soon as we receive them, which will be roughly April 14th. Applications will be received by 5:00 PM on Wednesday, May 5th, in order to be eligible for a mailed ballot. After that, we are not allowed to mail out any further ballots. The ballots will be able to be returned to the town clerk's office by mail, in person, or to the official ballot box, which will be located here at 12 Kent Way. One other benefit that I see to vote by, the vote by mail option, is it also allows ample time for voters to research candidates and make voting decisions, and we have started the process of getting a candidate's forum going. Hopefully, Richard Lodge will agree to moderate again this year. We're waiting to hear back from him, and he's been in touch with Cindy from the Council on Aging. So with regards to in-person voting, we can begin absentee in-person voting once we receive the ballots, and that will take place during regular business hours, as it always does. We will recommend that the voters complete their application or request and bring it with them, which will, which will save time. Additionally, the voters can call us ahead if they would like to schedule a suitable time or date, and that will help us to plan, coordinate, prevent lines and overcrowding. We can, at this time, only accommodate three voters at a maximum, given the six-foot distancing guidelines that we are currently required to follow. So our recommendation, based on the information that we have now from the legislation, as well as the three elections, which we did early voting last year, is that we would hold early person voting during regular business hours from Monday, May 3rd, and they will continue through Monday, May 10th at 12:00 PM. Through the legislation, they cannot start early voting prior to May 1st, and that will carry them through after the deadline passes to request a ballot in writing. We also have an outreach plan with Cindy Courier and the Council on Aging Director. She has already sent out the absentee voting information to her contacts. It's also on the website, the Newbury Channel, as well as the town's Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Once we handle the final details tonight, we can establish and repost information regarding early voting, and I will also submit an article to the Newbury Port News for publication. So the way the legislation is written, the town clerk makes the recommendation, the Select Board has to vote on that, so it's in your court.
Thank you, Leslie. Are there any questions from the board for Town Clerk?
Leslie, was it smooth the last three times you did it? It was, was it smooth for you, you guys, in there?
It's extremely challenging, but yes, we made it efficient, as efficient as we possibly could with a small staff.
Okay, well, thanks for visiting us tonight.
Excuse me?
Oh, Jerry, we have one more. Jerry?
So, Ms. Haley, you're looking for the Board of Selectmen to move to authorize you to have the early voting hours, is that correct?
That is correct. That is required by the legislation in order for us to move forward with early voting hours.
Okay, so then I would, I would move to have the board authorize the town clerk to have early voting hours at convenient hours prior to the election, as the law allows.
I will second that.
Okay, is that okay, Leslie? Do you need anything else?
No, no, as long as you're voting, approving what I've outlined, that works for me.
Okay. So I have a question on that.
Yes.
So the way that the motion is, it was made, was that it was as the law allows? Are you modifying the hours, or is it as the law allows?
So the law does not allow early voting to start any earlier than May 1st. I'm recommending starting voting, early voting on Monday, May 3rd, and going through noon time the day before the election. We have to do absentee then anyway, so they're basically one and the same at this point, and it's all extremely confusing for voters, not to mention us, but that will give people a chance to get in when they most need it, which is the week before the election, and it's also too late to mail ballots and get them back in time.
Okay, so do you, I guess my question is, does anybody see any, any issue with the way the motion was read? I don't. JR, do you? Mike, do you?
No, I have seconded it. The law allows May 1st, and Leslie's going to initiate on May 1st, so maybe it should be.
May 3rd.
May 3rd.
May 3rd, yes.
Maybe it should be as Leslie presented.
Or, or if you wanted me to amend it to actually give the date, May 3rd through May 10th until noon, May 10th.
That's perfect.
During, it's during regular, during regular business hours, May 3rd through May 10th at noon.
That would be, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
We have a second?
I did.
Well, I second that amendment.
All right, I'll second it. Jeff?
Okay.
So on the, on the, the amendment is, you need a vote on the amendment, I guess, and then the regular.
Okay, we have a, we have a second. Is there any more discussion? Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes.
Okay, so that was on the amendment. Now we need to vote on the motion.
Right. So.
Roll call vote.
Yeah.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. Sorry, folks, I'm sliding my station down, we're plugging on, to see if we can improve the audio here.
And I apologize for being late.
May I just have, have a question, another question, Ms. Haley?
Yes.
The hours, the actual voting hours are reverting back to our usual one, which is 7:00 in the morning until 8:00 in the evening?
You will be voting on that when you vote on the warrant.
Okay, okay. But that's what, okay, that's what the warrant is proposing?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your time, Leslie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Coming up on our public meeting time here. Anyone have a quick, two-minute meeting update or anything? Do we have Karen yet, Mike?
Um, I think she thinks the meeting is at 7:00. That was my fault. I'm gonna, I'm gonna send her a text when I got the text, when I realized that I was 15 minutes late.
That's all right. I have a feeling we'll be here.
I have a meeting, I have an update. The, JR, if you want me to do it now. So I attended the Massachusetts Municipal Association Fiscal Policy Committee meeting today. That was our March monthly meeting, and what I've learned from, as we know, the governor comes up with his budget, and then it gets tweaked in the legislature, and it gets tweaked with MMA input. So the Student Opportunity Act was passed last year, and the, last year was supposed to be year one of funding, but COVID hit, and that blew everything up, so it wasn't funded last year. The MMA, the governor put in his budget to fund year one this year. Well, the MMA is asking to fund it year one and two. They're asking if they fully fund the circuit breaker. This is all chapter 70, 70 stuff for educate, public education. They also asking for them to fully fund the state-owned land in their pilot program. There was, revenues in February were very strong at the state, at the state level, so there's a feeling that there is gonna be enough adequate funds to fund these things that the MMA is lobbying for. There was some discussion on ARPA funds, and if they needed to be accepted by the Select Board or Town Meeting, has to accept those funds, and I don't know, I haven't, I don't think that's been answered yet. Tracy, have you heard anything about the ARPA funds being, have to be accepted by the Select Board or Town Meeting?
I have not, and we're waiting for guidance on what they can be utilized for. So right now, you know, we, we hope to be receiving a lot of money, but until we know what we can spend it on, it's not particularly helpful right now.
Right, so everybody in the Commonwealth's in the same boat, but there's a lot of money coming at us, and there's a lot of money coming to a lot of the, everyone in the Commonwealth, so the state and the cities and town, so we have a meeting next month, and hopefully I'll, I'll learn more then. That's my update.
Thank you, Alicia.
You're welcome. Now we're coming up on 6:29.
All right, we'll give it one more minute before we begin the public hearing. I'll read the notice. This is Newbury Port, Newbury Select Board, Water Supply Protection, Overlay District, for a special permit decision under the zoning bylaw upon petition of Bavaro Family Realty 2 LLC, Joseph P. Bavaro, Principal, 3 Newbury Port Turnpike. Motion to open, a motion to continue the public hearing.
Motion to open or continue the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle? Mike's.
Mike, you're on, you're on mute.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
JR?
Yes.
Okay, do we have the applicant? Or representative for the applicant?
Yes. TJ's on.
Sorry, wouldn't let me unmute for a second there. Hi, good evening. My name is TJ Melvin with Millennium Engineering here on behalf of the applicant. So I know the Select Board has seen this project a few times. I can bring the plans up again if you'd like. I can give a brief update of what's happened since the last time we were in front of you. We have received site plan approval from the Newbury Port Planning Board, and we did not meet with the Newbury Planning Board last week. We're actually meeting with them tomorrow, but other than that, we, we haven't been in front of any other boards at this point. We made a very slight revision to the plan. I was just calling out something on a detail. And other than that, at this point, with the planning board, we're kind of working through architecture and signs and lighting. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions the board may have at this point, or I can bring up the plans, whatever you guys would like.
Okay, if you, do you have any new information you want to present to us before we move to the board questions?
No, we really haven't updated the site plans. It's mostly just been the architecture side of the project at this point.
Okay, I would open up to questions from the board. Jeff?
JR, exactly what is everyone looking for tonight? Do they want a vote of the board tonight? Are we waiting for anything else in Newbury Port or Newbury? This has been before our con con, correct or not correct?
That's correct. We've actually received the order of conditions from them.
Okay. And TJ, they're looking for a vote from us tonight, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Any, any other questions from the board? Any, any other questions from the board?
Does anybody feel it would be helpful to put up the plans before we vote?
I'm comfortable.
You're comfortable with it? Jerry?
No.
No, you don't want the plans or no, you're not comfortable?
No, I don't need the plans.
Jeff?
I'm okay.
Identify a motion.
Motion to vote. Unless, any other questions?
Is there a second?
Well.
How about this? We have a draft approval. What I'll do is I'll read through it and we can vote on that. In conformance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9, in the zoning bylaws of the Town of Newbury, the Select Board, open to duly advertise public hearing on Wednesday, December 6th, 2020, consider Protection Overlay District Special Permit Application, submitted by Bavaro Realty 2 LLC, Joseph P. Bavaro, Principal, to be performed in the Water Protection Overlay District. The applicant introduced oral, written, and graphic evidence. Parties and interests were present and were given the opportunity and comment to ask questions. Hearing was continued to January 12th, 2021, January 9th, 2021, and to March 23rd, 2021, and closed on that date. Applicant seeks a special permit in accordance with Section 97-4B, 4B 03, for a use that will render impervious more than 15% or 2,500 square feet of any, whichever is greater Protection Overlay District. This property is approximately 1.65 acres in area and consists of three contiguous parcels, two located in Newbury at 3 Newbury Port Turnpike, R 47, Lot 38, and Lot 39 totaling approximately 1.5 acres in size. 177 State Street, assessors map 34, Lot 1, approximately 0.15 acres in size. Possiles lie within the Business and Light Industrial District, Protection Overlay District. The Newbury Port parcel is located in the Business District. Property consists of both upland and wetland areas with the upland on the western portion of the site and eastern portion of the site. Currently, the property is vacant. Teriorated asphalt pavement present throughout the uplands. The lot was occupied by Circle Finishing Incorporated. December 1993, the building was destroyed by fire, which resulted in the release of metals, petroleum, and volatile organic compounds to the upland soil and groundwater on the site and firefighting water runoff to the adjoining wetland. Fire debris, including building demolition, removal of underground storage tanks, removal of remaining hazardous materials, extensively assessed between 1995 and 2004. Remedy implementation plan was prepared. 14 remedial remedy, remedial activities were conducted at the site. Majority of the sediment in the wetland area immediately east of the former industrial building. The water generated from dewatering the wetland ahead of excavation and removal of water seepage during the excavation. In the upland, soil excavation activities were conducted to remove metal and VOC-impacted soils from source areas. The three-risk characterization of harm to human health, public welfare, safety, and the environment demonstrated a condition of no significant risk to human health exists at the site. The applicant proposes to construct a 15,000-square-foot, three-story mixed-use building and associated site improvements, including two driveways, one for ingress and one for egress, vehicles, landscaping, and stormwater management facilities. The first floor will contain 3,000 square feet of repress. General storage space in the second, third floors will be occupied by a total of 14 1- and 2-bedroom residential units. Project has been designed to minimize excavation of existing soils. In general, the site will be raised one to two feet to support the infrastructure and improve stormwater runoff during weather events. All proposed improvements will occur on the uplands bordering the Newbury Port Turnpike. Next to wetland recess areas are proposed. In order to address the increase in impervious surface associated with the proposed development, the stormwater management system has been designed in conformance with 2008 Massachusetts Stormwater Management Standards. System includes sediment forbays, erosion control, and an infiltration basin. The application was reviewed by the Newbury Conservation Commission, Planning Board, Building Inspector, Board of Health, Zoning, Fire Department, Police Department, and comments and recommendations were recorded and filed. There were no comments on the project from interested parties or from other members of the public. Now for findings in a vote. Liberation and consideration, the Select Board voted unanimously on a motion. Who made the motion? Mike?
Yes.
Made by Mike Doyle. And seconded by, who was our second?
We haven't had one yet.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, and seconded by Jeff. To approve the special permit as the intent of this bylaw and its specific criteria have been met. Specifically in Section 97-4B 5C. Court found that the proposed development in no way during construction or thereafter will adversely affect the existing or potential quality or quantity of water that is available in the Water Supply Protection Overlay District. The project is designed to avoid substantial disturbance of the soils, topography, drainage, vegetation, and other water-related natural characteristics of the site to be developed. Conditions of approval, the following conditions are placed on this approval. The applicant shall continue to monitor the surface water and sediment in the onsite wetland until a condition of no significant risk of harm to the environment is achieved. Are there any other conditions the board would like to place on this project? Jeff?
Is this the time for discussion or just conditions, or should I make them a little bit of both?
It can be a little bit of both. If we stop right there.
I have a point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm not sure if the, if we close the public hearing on this.
You can, if I may?
Yes, Martha, please.
You know, the public hearing is still open and you, you can certainly take a vote and it's common to, to go through the decision and render that decision before the public hearing is closed.
Does the public hearing need to stay open for the planning board purposes?
No, I think at this point, as, as TJ said, the planning board is dealing primarily more with some of the sort of architectural and signage issues and things like that, not, not related to the special permit for the Water Supply Protection Overlay District. I think the only, there, there will be a condition made, the recommendation of Joe Sawakar, our peer engineer, about having an additional test pit done when construction starts. So that will be in, in the planning board's decision. Assuming that, that it's approved. I don't know if you might want to include any sort of language in here about incorporating any conditions of other, you know, other boards or committees or other concerns that you might have that have been raised during the process.
Martha, my, my thoughts were just to mirror that. Do we need to also mirror Joe's concerns on the deeper test pits and a few more test pits? Should we memorialize that in our decision? Because I was prepared to do that. Because certainly I have my feelings about this project a little, but certainly we're going to be adding impervious surface. We're going to be tidying up the place. We're going to be moving in a direction that needs to be moved in. My concerns are that as we add that impervious surface, we're going to be shunting it towards a detention area, which I'm having trouble wrapping my head around. But some of the test pits were made to go in that, that, that location. So that might ease some of my thoughts enough to be able to vote in the affirmative going forward. But do we need to memorialize it in ours or are you going to be sure to do it in yours?
And I think you can certainly do it in yours, or you can reference the conditions of the planning board. So.
Why don't I do this, J I, you're asking for conditions. So I'd like to, as the planning board is going to do, I would like to memorialize the conditions of the test pits to be added to our decision as Joe Sawakar mentioned. And I could actually say them or we could just take them as he mentioned them.
I'm comfortable just taking as he mentioned them.
And that's good enough for me because actually the response was, it's fine, we agree to put the test pits in. So it was, they were somewhat.
And I believe it's actually just one test pit. I don't know if it would be helpful for TJ to pull up the plans. He'll be, he'll have to be made co-host in order to do that and he could show exactly that, that location.
I think what it was, Martha, to make approvals contingent upon conducting additional deeper test pits in the area of the biodetention area after erosion controls are installed prior to any site work. And then I think there was, it would be prudent to conduct additional test pits and advance them to eight to 10 feet as would be typical.
Right, so I guess question to TJ, has any of that been, been addressed? And you're muted.
I said, no, we haven't addressed it. I, I believe as, as part of his condition was after approval before construction, once erosion controls are installed. So at this point, we don't, we haven't planned to do any test pits yet. I guess once the erosion controls are in place, we can schedule it with Joe.
Right, okay, so that, that language as, as a select board member, Walker just read, would be appropriate. As a condition, yeah, okay.
Martha, should we vote on that condition now?
Um, I think, I don't think you need to vote specifically on that condition. You know, that would be incorporated unless you want to, you know, make sure that all the board members are comfortable with that. Otherwise, it's incorporated into the decision that you vote on.
Are all board members comfortable with this?
I'm fine with that.
I'm, I'm fine with that too, but I, I was wondering, I don't know, Martha, do you have the findings? We're supposed to have findings in front of you. Can you read those findings to us so that we know exactly what it is we're voting on?
Yeah, so the two findings, again, actually Chairman Colby read them earlier. But the first finding is you have to find that the proposed development in no way during construction or thereafter will, will adversely affect the existing or potential quality or quantity of water that is available on the Water Supply Protection Overlay District. And the second is you have to find that the project is designed to avoid substantial disturbance of the soils, topography, drainage, vegetation, and other water-related natural characteristics of the site to be developed. So those are the two findings that you need to make in order to grant the special permit.
Oh, thank you, Martha. So just from me speaking personally, I'm comfortable with the first finding. I think that I'm comfortable with that as project as designed. And the second finding with the amendment that, with the condition that selectman Walker put in here, I think I, I'm comfortable voting in the affirmative on those, with those two findings. Me.
Any other comments before I move on with the rest of the question? Okay. The special permit is granted with the understanding that it will be recorded at the Essex South Registry of Deeds at Salem, Mass. And that a copy of the recorded document showing book and page will be filed with the Select Board. Notification is hereby given that appeals, if any, shall be made pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 17, within 20 days after this decision is filed with the Newbury Town Clerk. And we have a motion on the floor to approve, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that was seconded.
I seconded, and I, yep.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
No.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
And J R Colby, yes. Okay, now Martha, is this a document that all the selectmen should sign? Or is this one that authorization can be given for the chair to sign?
You know, I think given that it's a special permit and it needs a, a super majority, I think it would be advisable to actually have it signed. And as I heard it, select person Heavy voted now, no against that?
That's correct.
That's correct. So it's four in favor and one against. So the signature change page will actually have to be modified accordingly. But still with four, it, it passes.
Okay, thank you, Martha.
You're welcome. And it needs, excuse me, it needs to be filed with the town clerk within 14 days, so.
I'll be over tomorrow to sign.
We'll need to formal, finalize the format. So as soon as it's ready, maybe we.
I can, yeah, I can let everybody know as soon as it's ready.
Really, thanks, Julie.
Now, what about closing the public hearing? Do we not do anything with that?
Yeah, so now you should, if you're, if you're all done and there's no further input from the applicant or the applicant's representative, you can close it.
Identify a motion.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote. Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
And J R Colby, yes. All right, thank you, TJ.
Thank you.
Thanks, Martha. Moving on, we have Robin Lawson, Robin Lawson, Cultural Council Chair, with a discussion regarding the Newbury, Town of Newbury celebration in 2022.
Thank you, J R, and thank you for inviting me. Just a little bit of background about this project. I'll keep it quite brief and then welcome any questions. I am Chair of the Newbury Cultural Council. Our new group wants to be more proactive in promoting the cultural life of Newbury Port, Newbury than the group has in the past, which is a good thing. We came up with the idea of an all-day event for all ages planned for the spring of 2022. The idea is to bring all three neighborhoods together over the course of the next year to work together in planning this event and have something for all of us to look forward to post-pandemic. We are now putting together a small steering committee and will be planning town-wide planning sessions with the intent of including as many people who want to participate. This is an ad hoc committee that's separate from the Cultural Council. And includes my, my current co-chair Heidi Fram, I believe, most of you know Heidi, who was responsible for very successful Byfield Days, which will be, actually, this is similar to Byfield Days in spirit, and also the Byfield Music Festival. Alicia has been an enormous help in, in planning thus far. And my last comment is that we could use pro bono legal assistance in setting up a 501(c)(3) designation for this project. That's the high level. Anybody wants to ask questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the board?
Robin, have you approached any local attorneys to see if they were interested?
No, I, I haven't actually. I wanted, I wanted you to do that, Mike.
All right, so can you do this? Send me some, some basic stuff, what you're looking for to have, have them do and let me approach some people, I know.
Oh, fantastic. Okay, great.
You got my, you got my email. I'll get, you get it from Julie.
Okay, and I'll, you'll see this come from me under my name from newbrytownday@gmail.com. We already have an email address. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yep.
Good question.
Jerry?
Yes, Ms. Lawson, what do you envision the celebration to have or include?
Well, the idea today, excuse me?
I know it's kind of early, but you'll.
Oh, you'd be surprised.
You'll pick a lot of people's interest and, and they might, they might want to volunteer.
Yes. Yes, so the, the plan is, I'll greet you some of the activities that we've kind of thrown against the wall. But just, just to make sure you understand how we've structured this, the, the plan is to have a steering committee meeting. We have a few people on the steering committee already, a week from tomorrow on the 31st of, of March. Then we will have a kind of a kickoff at town meeting on April 27th. And then in May, and again in September, we'll have what they call charrettes, which is a town-wide. You know, everybody's invited to come and, and give us ideas for activities and for people to take charge and be team captains for things like that, so that we can have a decentralized approach. And we already have, our town moderator has already agreed to help us with those. So since you asked more specifically, I'll just read from my list here. So since you asked more specifically, I'll just read from my list here. We've got pancake breakfast. We've got historical walking tours. We have vintage baseball. We have parade. We have contests and games. We have open artist studios. I already have a team captain for that. Picnics, barbecue, clam chowder, chili cook-off, farmer's market, road race. That's 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 what we have so far.
Wow. Sounds sounds great.
Yeah, it does.
And is this going to be all in one, all of those activities on on one day or a weekend for the celebration in two thousand and twenty-two?
The idea when we just started, which is about a month ago, was to have one day, but a certain individuals that might end up being all weekend. I think we need a rain date. It really remains to be seen as we start to get more more input. And I've already talked to Bethany over at Spencer Pierce Little Farm. Uh, and she would, she's more than amount amenable to our having most of it take place there. We're thinking that whole area, you know, upper green, tours of the new police station, fire department. It's all, you know, it's all there and and central to Plum Island, Old Town and Byfield.
Okay. Well, sounds wonderful.
Yes.
And I think what one of the things also that we've discussed is having having this to be at no cost or extremely low cost, but hopefully no cost to Newbury residents. So, you know, I I kind of envision all the nonprofits that are in town coming and setting up like a a booth, so to speak, or an awning, a tent on the green so that people can come by and walk and and see what we have to offer. You know, I'm thinking the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, the Friends of the Library, the Friends of the Council on Aging, and all that kind of stuff. So it's all has to be flushed out. But I'm I'm super excited about this culminating at the end with a rock and roll concert. I mean, I think it's gonna be great.
Robin, another idea might be is to contact what Yankee Homecoming up in Newbury Port is changing, okay? They're scaling it way back, but maybe one of the days they can, we can have a Newbury weekend or something like that connected with Yankee Homecoming, okay? Just an idea, just throwing out there. It's like they've done this for a long time.
Yep.
Maybe we can pick their brain. Okay, just throw it out there.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Well, thanks for the update, Robin. Oh, Jeff.
I think we have, I think we have, well, Mr. Lucy, Captain Lucy, Chief Lucy.
I've never gone through the ranks that quick. Mr. Chairman, can I speak on this?
Yes.
So first of all, welcome, Robin. This is a wonderful idea. Very excited to first I've heard of it. And as soon as I'm available, you know, you would like me to be available to assist in any way, shape or form on the progression of this. Please, you know, feel free. We can sit down and, you know, as soon as next week, if you want, just to get the preliminaries and to help facilitate this. And you're really in the right, you're you're welcome. And you're on the right track with Bethany, too. She's a rock star with this stuff.
Indeed, she is.
She is. She's unbelievable. So latch onto her and don't let go until you're done because she's really good. And Heidi is a lot of experience going on there, too. So you've got a you've got a good crew. Uh, but if you can, if I can be of any assistance to be a part of that crew, it might be here. It'd be exciting to get something like this going.
That's great. Yeah. One thing is obviously tours of the police station that we'll want to talk to you about. But also, you know, traffic and and all the the actual police things. So we we figured we'd actually approach you closer to the event. And now that you volunteered, we'll approach you before.
Yep.
Oh, since John, we got John in a soft minute, you know, maybe we can have the fire engines out like we did before. And you think you can get the guys from the Northeast Motorcycle?
Oh, we can get so, the sky's the limit. Whatever Robin wants, Robin's gonna get. We'll make it happen. It'll be fun.
Remembers those guys, but they came in and they did figure eights and made the bikes stand on end and they all weigh nine hundred pounds. It was a great show.
I remember that. Yeah.
If you'll even get the helicopter in from the state, that was a big hit.
Yeah.
We'll come up with all kinds of things.
Okay.
Whatever you need.
This is great. Thank you for all the enthusiasm. I have to tell you, of all the town projects I've worked on, and some of you know them, this is definitely the most fun.
Good, good.
Also, Robin's gonna be presenting at a town meeting.
And Heidi.
And Heidi together are gonna present to town meeting a kickoff, like she knows no more than five, five minutes. But I think it's important that, you know, that it gets kicked off there and people understand what what this is and they give them something to look forward to.
Yeah. And then there's, of course, and I'll just say one quick thing is funding aspects of it, too, that we'll need to discuss further. But we have some ideas about how to get, how to get money. And actually, we can have fifteen percent of our Massachusetts Cultural Council allotment for grants for next year, which is usually around five thousand dollars. So we have a little bit of seed money for it already.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for your hard work, Robin.
You bet.
Thanks for your patience with tonight's meeting.
I know. I know we get to the fun part eventually.
Chairman Colby?
Yes.
I apologize for being late, but Karen Tyler from the vets is here and if we can give her a few minutes, I would appreciate it.
Yep, this is the perfect time. Do we have you?
She has to be unmuted.
Hey, hang on one second. We'll get you unmuted. There we go.
All right, terrific. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I am happy to come on tonight because I'd like to share some great news with everyone. And I think that, you know, it's it's a it's good to hear some some positive things, especially, you know, now. So anyways, so I had a Triton High School student come up to me. He said, Karen, he goes, I'd like to do something for homeless veterans. Do they need socks? I said, yeah, absolutely. That's like the number one item that's, you know, that is in need and can always be used. He said, all right, I'm gonna do a sock drive. So he did it for one month and he calls me up and he goes, I got one thousand three hundred and twenty-four pairs of socks.
Rock style.
Is that crazy?
Well.
I was like, um, thirteen hundred socks? And he's like, no, pairs. So, yeah, um, you know, this, he's an outstanding young man. His name is Douglas. And he's hoping to go to Annapolis after high school and stuff. So I was like, yeah, I'll bring you into everything I do, you know. And so he's he's a great kid to have on our side. So what I'm gonna do with those socks is bringing them to the Northeast Outreach Center, the Veterans Northeast Outreach Center, which is in Haverhill, and it's for homeless veterans and their families, and they do a lot of supportive services and stuff like that, too. They're, you know, kind of all encompassing, you know, in regards to services that they provide. And so on top of that, yesterday I got another donation and it's of individual packets of shampoo and and body washes and things like that. I got I got fifty-two boxes.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, of these individual packets and there are a hundred in each box. So they're like these little, you know, little packets like this. And and so it's from this guy Jacob, who is in the Air National Guard. And the these things are perfect for, so these donations I'm gonna bring to Operation Troop Support, which does care packages to deploy troops overseas. And this is perfect for them for a couple of reasons. One, they're individually packed, so it's a one and done, you know, a lot more sanitary than, you know, having a big bar of soap or a bottle of shampoo or something that you're trekking all over the place. And also because they're so small and so light, you can throw them in your rucksack and they don't take up room and they're not something that you're gonna have to carry around with you for days and stuff on end. Um, and so it's just, it ended up being, you know, perfect. And so I was really happy because I got to assist two different organizations with two different missions. And in the the donation, the items were perfect for each one. So, uh, so, yeah, so I just wanted to share that with you guys.
Mr. Chairman, real quickly, can we get the names of the of the students from Tritons that were involved and have the board send them a thank you letter? I think it would be a nice touch, okay, to recognize which is a nice, nice deal.
Yeah. Is that a motion?
I'll make I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
And JR Colby? Yes.
Thanks, John.
Karen, would you be able to send me the names of those students?
Yeah, absolutely.
I have your email address, so I can send you a quick email.
Okay, perfect. Yeah. And I presented him with a with a challenge coin, which is a military tradition. And I'm also gonna write him a letter from from Eastern Essex. So I just want to load this kit up so that way he has a nice resume for when he's ready to apply. Yeah. So this is excellent. And thank you for letting me pop on and let me, you know, and tell you guys, you know.
Chairman Colby, thanks for letting me sneak this one in.
Oh, yeah, no, no problem.
Thank you.
Good, good hard work by some of our young people and.
Oh, yeah, it was. It's always good to see that.
Absolutely.
All right. Thanks for joining us.
Karen.
All right.
Job, job well done.
Uh, he did great. So you guys enjoy the rest of the night.
Thanks.
Do we need a vote to send a letter or we all said?
We just took it.
Yeah, I wrote it down as to send the thank you note.
But thank you.
Okay, next item, appointment of Officer Max Smigel ski to the rank of start sergeant. Would you like to start us off, Chief Lucy?
Yes, I'd love to actually. Be an honor. Since October first, two thousand and twenty twenty, with the restructuring of the police department, there's been a vacancy in our sergeant's rank. Uh, and we are very fortunate as a community, as a police department, that we had six viable candidates for that advancement, that promotion. So because of the fact we had the six viable candidates, we we outsourced the assessment process. And what that consists of is three months' worth of studying and working hard to to prepare for the assessment. And then we had a total of one hundred and seventy-two years of collective service and law enforcement sitting on the board that made the assessment for the for the proper candidate. All those efforts and all that work was talked out by Officer Smigel ski. Uh, I will say that he has twenty-four years of law enforcement experience. He's been our our firearms instructor in in the firearms range master for, oh, I believe like seven or eight years at least. He's got fifteen years on the Newbury Police Department, which I indirectly and directly supervised him for that period of time. Officer Smigel ski is current in all the mandatory trainees and certifications. He's he's proven to be dedicated, dependable, and a very, very good character. Uh, and for these reasons, I'm putting his name before you to consider for the promotion of sergeant.
I'd like to make the motion. And I feel honored to make the motion, having watched Mark be part of our town for a long time. I'd like to make the motion for Max Smolsky to be promoted to sergeant.
I'll second that.
And we're both doing.
Discussion?
Excellent choice. Excellent choice. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Familiar face around town for years and, you know, takes the job seriously and he's good at it. Okay. I'll move to a roll call vote. Greco?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
JR Colby? Yes. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mark.
Congratulations.
Good job, well done. I would just like to inject once very quickly, Mark, I am so proud of you. I am in your own department and I wanted to save that until it was official. But congratulations, my friend. You did a very, very good job and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for your support as well. Without your support and the support of everybody here, we all know that it probably wouldn't happen because without cultivating the right atmosphere for for progression, nothing, nothing gets done. And also thank you to the board members for for your support. And I promise that we're gonna keep pushing forward, keep making the residents of this town very proud of its police department. And not only the residents, but everybody that comes to visit as well. That's not going to change. If anything, we're gonna try and make improvements in that. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, and congratulations. Thank you, everyone.
Job well done.
Thanks, Mark.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before you move on, could you do a vote for the chair to sign the appointment slip?
Good catch.
Thank you.
Identify a motion.
Motion at the chairman sign the appointment slip.
Second.
Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
And JR Colby? Yes. What time are we being joined by FinCon? I noticed we had Erica join us. Was there a particular time they were gonna? I just want to keep everybody a huge crowd waiting.
I expect them to be here around seven.
Okay, we still have business to conduct, so that's that's just fine. We have license for Georgie Porgy's ice cream.
Move to accept. Move to accept business license for Georgie Porgy.
This is.
Julie, I'll second that. Yeah.
Actually, I'm sorry. It's an entertainment license.
Entertainment. Is he here at all to explain anything? Okay.
He's, from what I understand, either last year, no.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, he has done a similar event and I know he was in touch with the Board of Health and all the all the proper powers that be to do it correctly, from what I heard.
Also, also, one of the things George is, I've been talking to him with, he wants to start a Chamber of Commerce for Newbury and he's he's got the right connections, he said. I think that would be a wonderful idea for the town of Newbury. You know, getting all the businesses in the same group and dealing with a lot of the issues. And George has got, he's he's had some good ideas and I think I'm glad to have this go through.
Any other discussion?
Was there a second? I missed it if there was, sorry.
Second, I'll second the motion. Okay.
Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
And JR Colby? Yes.
Do I need to have the chair sign the license?
Second that.
Call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
JR Colby? Yes. We have a commercial claim permit application. Lenny Dobson, twelve Wright real old.
All right.
One eighty dash three ninety.
Yeah, I can just close it up.
Motion to sign.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Yes.
And JR Colby? Yes.
Motion for Chair to sign the claim permit application.
I'll second that.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
And JR Colby? Yes. We have a business license. Francis Broadberry, DBA Plum Island Grill, Two Plum Island Boulevard, Common Victular.
Motion to accept Island Grill's license application.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
And JR Colby? Yes. Okay. And next, we have a business license.
Can somebody do also vote to have you sign that business license for Plum Island?
I move that we ask the chairman to sign the business license for Plum Island Grill.
Second.
Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
And JR Colby? Yes. I'm gonna recuse myself from the next business license.
I'll pick it up.
Thank you.
We have a business license for JR Colby and Elizabeth Knight, Common Pastures LLC, DBA Colby Farm, Fifty Scotland Road, Retail Foods, Common Victular, and Crafts and Gifts.
Motion to accept.
Yep, second.
Roll call vote. Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Alicia Greco? Yes. And I have a vote to ask the vice chair to sign the the license.
I'll make a motion. Alicia, assign the vice, the vice chair to sign the license.
And I'll second it.
Roll call vote. Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle? Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes.
All right, do we have all our folks from FinCon yet?
I think we do. It's looking healthy. Hi, Erica.
I don't see Marshall, is he here yet?
He just arrived.
There's Marshall.
Okay.
Hey, guys, we were in the wrong, we were, there were two different Zoom links out there. So we were in a different one.
Well, that's scary.
My God, you were in a warp zone.
And then we couldn't, I couldn't let you know that, because I couldn't get unmuted before. So I had to leave and go find them and bring them back.
How'd you do on the first meeting, okay?
Did you have a good conversation?
It was with Riley, but they're happy with it.
All right.
Thanks all here, or we...
Let me just check.
We had Linda. Linda Jean Marshall and I were in there.
And KB.
And KB, yep.
Didn't we vote already not to approve any budget?
None at all?
There's no seconds on that, Jean.
Linda just joined. I see.
Jean Case has been on the meet, that was a long, I was with him forty, almost twenty years ago, 25 years ago.
Too long.
Too long, thank you, sir.
Back in the 80s, somewhere in the 80s.
Okay.
And still hit the golf ball a long way.
All right, so. We will open the the Finance Committee portion at 7:17. And we have Linda Allen, we have Jean Case, Tom Howard, AV Yesser, and Erica Jacob. So we have a forum, and JR, have you read the notice for the beginning of the meeting, or do we have to... You have a lot of feedback.
Can you mute KB? Okay, try now, Marshall.
Okay, now, do we, do we have to reread the, or have you read the posting per Governor Baker to start? No, I have not, if you have it handy.
No, I read it, I read it when we started our meeting.
Okay. As far as how that applies to you folks.
They're joining our meeting, so.
So we're covered, we're covered, I think.
Okay.
Since it's a joint meeting, if we've read it once, I think we're covered. All right. So we have some financial matters to go over and do some votes. So unfortunately, we were not privy to the first part of your meeting, so where are we now, Tracy?
We haven't started yet, we can go through the warrant, and I can record each of the board's votes for the Finance Committee's appropriation booklet.
Okay. So let's go to the latest version of the warrant. Okay. So we have, well, the Finance Committee has start with Article 3. I'll read Article 3, this is to see if the town will fix the salaries and compensation of certain elective officers of the town as follows. Reader 500, Select Board, each member 7,500. Chair 3,500, Board of Assessors, each member 2,500. Town Clerk 63,538. 5,000, Fish Commissioner, each member 1,300. Chair 1,500. Board, each member 1,000. Chair 1,500. Each member 1,000. Okay, thank you, JR. I'd entertain a motion to approve this.
Jean has a question.
Go ahead, Jean. Well, we'll motion, second, and then conversation, okay?
Make a motion.
Second? Okay, Linda's second. All right, Jean, go ahead.
Have the selectmen already voted and approved everything?
No.
Oh.
We haven't gotten it yet.
So what I'll do is...
Before we, aren't the selectmen required to do that first, Tracy?
They, everyone's going to be voting tonight, I would assume the select board would take their votes first.
Okay, we'll kick it off. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
This is just for Article 3, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
JR Colby, yes. Okay. Any comments, discussion from the Finance Committee on Article 3? Seeing none, we'll go through the vote. Linda Allen. Sorry?
Yes.
Jean? I'm, yes. Tom?
Yes.
KB?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
All right, to see if the town will vote to change the date of the celebration of Halloween, including the practice of trick or treat from the 31st of October to the first Saturday after the 31st of October. Unless the 31st of October falls on a Saturday, in which case the celebration will be held on the 31st of October in that year. And this is sponsored by Marshall Jesperson.
Yes. I don't think we need to do anything but the will of the town on this one.
Okay.
Well, on discussion?
Yes.
Are we going to not have any discussion?
No, we're going to, we haven't taken a vote yet. Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
Point of order, can we vote on this? This is a citizen's petition, I don't know, I think. Do we vote on this, or do we vote to approve it, or to support it?
Do we make a motion to put it on?
In the past, with articles like this, if there was wishy-washiness, whether it should be voted on, we've generally left it to the will of the town, as Marshall said earlier.
So I think we're just, we're voting on whether or not the Select Board supports this and not putting it on the warrant, correct?
Well, no. The, go ahead, Tracy.
Last, at the last meeting when we discussed these, the board voted to include all of the articles that you see before you, with an exception of some late arrivals, there are a few at the end which you have not seen. The citizens petitions automatically go on the warrant once the town clerk has certified the signatures. So as a board, you can either vote to support it or not, or you can vote to leave it to the will of the town. But that's entirely up to the Select Board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we leave this to the will of the town.
But I still like to get my two cents.
Yeah, well, we will get a second of the motion, then we'll...
Like, go ahead, yeah.
I'm just saying, it's like, I hate seeing holidays moved, the holiday falls, you celebrate it. Next thing you know, we'll be moving Christmas to Saturday, okay? So I'm not in favor of ever moving the holiday from the date it was there for. That's all.
Question?
Gary?
Yeah, this was sponsored by you, Mr. Jesperson, can you tell us why it's needed?
Yes. The reason I sponsored this, it's one of many holidays that have been moved. And for good reason, the reason for this one is that if it is on a Saturday, then the following day is not a school day, and I've talked to several teachers who supported this. It's not a school day, so you don't have kids coming in with a sugar high. And it is on, it will always fall on the day when there is an extra hour, because that's the day we fall back. And therefore, the recovery from Halloween will have an extra hour of sleep in which to do that. So it's a, what I thought would be a really good idea for keeping kids not trick or treating on a school night, and giving the adults an extra hour of sleep and recovery after trick or treating. I did talk with our Chief of Police when I wrote this, who was not John Lucy. But he said he had no problem with it. One of the things that does come up is that it would allow people, certainly on the borders, to go trick or treating in more than one town. But that's the parents issue, not ours.
Can I, can I bring something up real quickly about that? A couple of years ago, Newport, Newbury didn't have trick or treating the same night. And I can't remember what, I think it was a snowstorm, so we canceled, okay? And then when we put it on, the following Saturday night, I had hundreds of children, okay? Because Newport, Marble Street is a, was a three-ring circus, it always is. And they just kept coming down into Newport and then down Riverview Drive, but it's, once again, I'm a traditionalist. The holiday is the 31st, you celebrate it the 31st, I'm sorry, Marshall, I don't agree with you.
All right. Not everyone is going to agree with me, not a problem.
Go ahead, Jean.
Saturday is a Sabbath day.
Yeah.
Just raising that as a...
I'm missing, I'm missing something.
I think it's point being, if there are Jewish children, they don't want to go out, they probably won't be able to go trick or treating.
That's another good point.
That's correct, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
We just have to keep that in mind.
Yeah.
Any other discussion before the Board of Selectmen is ready to vote? Seeing none, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Excuse me, we're taking a vote to do what? I'm sorry.
Will of the town.
Mike Doyle?
Hold a timeout, the will of the town, so if I vote no, I'm not, I want the will of the town to do it.
Say two, say, say, one person votes no, and two people vote yes, and the remain vote the will of the town, that's how it will read on the warrant when...
I want the will of the town to decide this, but I don't agree with it, so no.
Okay, Jeff Walker?
Will of the town, yes.
Jerry Heavy?
You know, I don't agree with it, and, but I do want the town to do it, because if they've got children, they should decide. So I guess I'll vote yes for the will of the people, but I don't agree with it, don't see it.
And JR Colby, will of the town. Okay, FinCon?
Well, this is going so smoothly, we're going to be done early.
Thursday morning, Thursday morning.
Is there, is there any money involved?
There's no money involved, so we are, we don't have, we don't have, we don't...
I will suggest, if we all follow Robert's rules of order, we'll get out of here two hours earlier. Let's keep moving. Has FinCon weighed in on, on the trick or treat article, Article 4?
We don't have to, we shouldn't, because it's not money related.
Okay. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or otherwise provide to meet salaries and wages of town officers and employees, expense and outlays of town departments and other temporary miscellaneous but regular expenditures necessary for the operation of the town for fiscal year 2022. General Government, 2,535,707. Public Safety, 3,102,244. Education, 10,989,938. DPW, 1,364,262. Human Services, 353,132. Culture and Recreation, 373,410. Debt Service, 1,084,713. Benefits, 1,865,814. For a total budget of 21,669,220.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I received notification from Triton Regional School District yesterday of an amended assessment amount. It's been reduced by 133,744, 133,744. So that, with that adjustment, the education line item will be reduced, and the total budget will be reduced down to 21,535,476.
Tracy, can I have the number for Triton? The new number, can I have the new number, Triton, please?
10 million, 10 million 309,959.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Jerry?
Yeah, I have to say, you know, this, this is a lot of, a lot of money. And it's just lumping everything together. For the sake of transparency, it is not transparent at all. I mean, you've got 10 million, and 2 million, and 3 million here. I mean, it, you know, it's, it's a lot of money, and for the voters, I think that they would like to see, as I would, more specificity, you know, what, what under education does this 10 million cover? For instance. So that's, that's my bone of contention, that this is not, this is not very transparent, it's not very clear. And I know this is the way it's done, but it should be changed the next time around.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Tracy.
May I respond?
Yes.
So in the documents that you were provided in your packet, in the back, you have the breakdown of all the individual line items. We also, we also publish that in the Finance Committee's appropriation booklet, so everyone can see the detailed information. And as far as the Triton operating budget, that is a separate budget document, but that is also available for viewing as well, if that's helpful.
It is help, it is helpful when you, when you say, oh, yeah, go to the very last page, and you'll get the breakdown. But how many people do? And how many people understand that that's what, that's what this is, and that represents all of these figures? So it's, it's not very clear, it's not very transparent.
I think most of the people at this table should know to learn.
Well, I'm talking about at town meeting, because this is a document for town meeting.
Right.
Information's also on ClearGov, it's all on our website as well, so if anyone's...
And at town meeting, it's got, there'll be an additional packet that'll go through everything, this will be available to town meeting.
This was, if I may speak during this part of this discussion, this was done, I want to say, Tracy will correct me, four or five years ago, because we used to read through every line item at town meeting, there'd be holds on individual meetings, and it would cause lots of, what we've done is to, in order to make it a more streamlined, we have, the Finance Committee does a budget booklet that then... that then kind of goes through each of the line items, like Tracy says, that is read. And it's sent out, there's a notice sent out to all residents prior to town meeting, letting them know where to find that budget document. So that there is plenty of time to do it, so that they're not going through the full budget at town meeting. But they can put a hold on this item and ask questions at town meeting.
I can, Mr. Jim, can I have a second?
Yes.
I just, I, I kind of agree with uh, Selectman Heavey, it's like, last time, I didn't, I, shame on me, I didn't look at the DPW budget, and there was money in there for the bathhouse and for work, and like I said, I, I would like to see a breakdown, and like I said, and granted, we had a probably, we had a big package to read today, and I only had, I worked the weekend, so I only had Friday, Monday and Tuesday, and we had a meeting, we had a three-hour meeting yesterday and a three-hour meeting today already. So it's like, I said, I just want more time to break it down because I don't want things sliding through like the bathhouse last, last time.
So, um, this packet was provided to you on Thursday.
But, Alicia, I work Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Okay, so, I know, and I got it Monday, but in Monday, we had a three-hour workshop.
We either make time to do this job, or we don't.
I know, but I've also been, but you know something, guys? You play it the same way, we could have some, some breakdown given to us a long time before this. I mean, it's, and it's like even today. Ms. Blaze said, there's gonna be things we haven't seen on the warrant tonight, and I, it's like, did you, did I hear that right?
Well, you received it in your packet on Thursday.
Okay, but there's nothing added tonight?
No, no.
I just thought I heard you say, there's some new things added tonight.
Well, we haven't discussed. The Board of Selectmen hasn't voted to include it yet.
Okay, all right.
So this information is, is, this isn't a secret, this information's out there for anyone to have it.
But you have to digest it in time.
You, you have to do your homework, you absolutely do, you're right.
I totally agree, but we, we, we spent six hours today doing homework, yesterday and today.
If you had any questions, you should have reached out to the town administrator, who I'm sure would have made time to go through it with you.
Well, okay, I said, I've made my point.
All right.
It's also a little harder during COVID, I mean, when we're meeting in, in, in person and everything, it's just always a little easier, communication is a little more thorough, so.
And just also, quick reminder too, is that the warrant is the, the warrant is put out to warn and inform the townspeople. The actual motion and the actual dollar figures are voted that night, they're read out loud. That is the final number, that sometimes numbers will change between this document and the fin- final warrant articles, and I believe each member of the select board reads those articles as the numbers, and those numbers are voted that night at town meeting. So things wi- may change.
Right, thank you.
That's a good point, Eric.
Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
JR Colby, yes. Hey. From the Finance Committee, any other questions, comments? Gene?
Refresh my memory, I'm getting old, you know?
Yes, we are.
There's a thirty-six percent increase in the salary under Board of Health salary and wages.
Yes.
What does that represent?
That represents, my understanding is that represents another half person. On, go ahead, Tracy.
The, uh, the health agent is going from part-time to full-time.
And is that a direct result of the pandemic?
Um, no, but the, the, um, it's something that we've been thinking about for quite some time, prior to the pandemic. The pandemic made us realize how much of a necessity it was. So this is, um, this was, uh, voted by the Board of Health.
And I still though think the Board of Selectmen do more notice because I got, I got blocked, clobbered by the chairman of the Georgetown Board of Health, uh, the Selectmen Board, who's on the Essex County Board of Health with me, the veterans, okay, and he says, you stole my health agent, and I says, what do you mean? And it put me in a very awkward position, because I did not know as a selectman that we made a full-time position for a health agent, and they gave her a new title. Okay, and we stole the, the half hours from Georgetown. And I just think it's, we have to be more communicative with the select board before something like this happens.
That's.
I felt like a fool, I did not know that we hired a full-time health agent, okay, in two days. And, and like I said, and it affected the select board for Georgetown, okay, because they don't have a health agent now. So I'm just like, and it's, once again, I'm just venting a, a concern.
Respectfully, that information is also in the packet.
Right, but I did not know it last Monday because the packet wasn't in my hands. Respectfully.
Okay, anyone else on the Finance Committee have any comments? Seeing none? Linda? Yes or no? You're, you're muted.
I know, this thing keeps popping up in my face. Yes, that's mine.
Okay. Gene?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Tom?
Yes.
Kaby?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Okay, and we have Joe. Joe is the yes. Thank you. Okay.
Article Six, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of one hundred thousand dollars or any other sum to be added to the stable placement fund or take any other action in relation thereto.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
JR Colby, yes. Okay, for the FinCom, any comments on this article? Discussion? Seeing none, Linda Allen?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Tom?
Yes.
Kaby?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars or any other sum to fund the other post-employment benefits or take any other action in relation thereto.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Tracy?
Mr. Chairman, um, I would recommend that you consider adding the a hundred thousand dollars to that appropriation. Uh, the money that was, we reduced the Triton Regional School District budget. I would recommend you increase our OPEB, uh, funding for this year.
Okay.
The motion to approve two hundred thousand dollars, Tracy?
Excuse me, discussion?
Is, was there a second? Hold on, hold on, Jerry, was there a second?
I'll second it, but to discuss it.
Discussion?
Yes, yeah, um, from what the packet told me, uh, this hundred thousand is to pay for uh, counsel and a professional, uh, advice on how we, uh, get these benefits down. So I guess my question is, would two hundred and thirteen, I mean, we're putting aside two hundred and thirteen for fees, is it necessary?
Yes, it's, Tracy?
It's actually to fund the OPEB liability, the other post-employment benefits liability. We've had an actuarial analysis completed, we have to update it every couple of years. Um, and we are trying to, we're obviously behind the, the eight ball like a, a lot of communities. So we're trying to fund what stands currently at about a five-point-nine million-dollar liability. We commit about a hundred thousand dollars annually. Um, and, uh, this year, we, we are, we now have a hundred thousand dollar, um, surplus in our operating budget, I would recommend you move that money towards the liability.
So it's, so it's not just for a, a, a actuarial, um, person or.
This pays, this pays down that debt.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Are we voting on the motion to increase it to a hundred thousand first, is that the first mo- vote?
Correct.
Okay, so no.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. And now let's take a, uh, a vote to approve the amended Article Seven. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
And Jeff, uh, JR Colby, yes.
Good.
From the Finance Committee, comments, discussion? Gene?
I know that a few years ago, we were doing seventy-five, we upped it to the hundred thousand. And I didn't think we were gonna move it because of the COVID, I'm happy to see that Tracy's found some money to aggressively start to take and go at this because it's an unfunded liability. And the five million is not going away, so anything we can do to take and work towards reducing it's a good thing.
Okay, Gene?
Well, I was just gonna ask Tracy, one, what would that give us for a total? And secondly, one of the factors that gets involved with this too is our bond rating, isn't that correct?
Yes.
So it, it helps our bond rating stay at a, at a pretty good level.
Yeah, if, if.
We're triple A now, and this, uh, this would just keep it right, tend to keep it at the triple A level, which makes our, any borrowing as, as inexpensive as possible when we have to borrow.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments from Finance?
Tracy was gonna tell us the total.
Yep, with, with town meeting approval, that would bring us up to about seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else from FinCom?
Thank you, Tracy, for making the motion or bringing that to our attention, I think it's definitely a good use of the, where we were able to recognize uh, keeping that to pay it down and to make sure that we're making that right. You know, the right fiscal decisions moving forward on that huge unfunded liability.
Okay, Linda?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Tom?
Yes.
Kaby?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
And Joe?
And yes.
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars or any other a storm or out of management purposes, or to take any other action in relation thereto.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. Okay, from FinCom, questions, discussion? Seeing none? Will vote, Linda Allen? Linda?
Yes.
Thank you. Gene?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Tom?
Yes.
Kaby?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to transfer or appropriate the sum of ninety-five thousand dollars, ninety-five thousand and fifty dollars or any other sum from the reserved cable television peg access special revenue fund for the support of peg access services programming, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
On discussion?
Jerry?
Yeah, um, I have to tell you, reading this, it, I'm really, really disappointed because once again, Channel Eight, you know, the students at Triton are getting shortchanged, there's absolutely no funding from this peg account to go over to the high school where they have a studio, they do use, uh, cable, especially during a pandemic. Um, you know, this is the same amount of money that, you know, we appropriated last year at the town, uh, meeting. And it's almost a year later, and that money has not been, been, been given or sent over to Triton, and they certainly could use it. Uh, I'm, I'm just very, very disappointed, and, and I guess I'm gonna call a spade a spade, I think there are some people who want to use the money in this account. You know, maybe for the new town hall, you know, I don't want the students to be shortchanged so somebody can get a upgrade from Naga hide to leather on their office chairs. So with that in mind, I would move to amend this, um, uh, amend it by adding the words and appropriate the sum of ninety-five thousand fifty dollars or any other sum from, um, the, uh, receipts of the reserve cable television peg access special revenue fund for the support of Triton Channel Eight.
I will second that motion. And also, I'd like to speak.
Discussion on the motion on the table.
As a, as somebody that worked at Triton for six years in this department with a special ed student, I saw that the money that we gave two years ago, how much that did for those kids, okay? And the fact that we, we found a way not to pay him last year, even though the town voted for it. I totally with Jerry, not to have money for the edu- it's peg education. Not to have money supporting Triton, I think is an embarrassment, and I won't vote for anything until it's done.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Alicia.
I believe the town administrator reached out to the superintendent of schools, asking them if they had any, any need for this, um, any, any amount to, for their programming, I was wondering if she could speak to that. We, um, we currently have the ninety, ninety-five thousand dollars that was amended on last year's article sitting in the account. Um, I believe the attorneys and the town accountant have discussed this with the board and its members previously. Um, we also had a ruling from the Massachusetts Department of Revenue Division of Legal Services, um, identifying what we could and could not spend those peg access funds on, it's very specific. The law is very specific, I've provided the, um, informational guideline re- release um, to the members of the board for a review, um, so that we'd all be clear. And we could not spend, we could not legally spend the money on what we had hoped to be able to spend it on. Um, after some brainstorming, we had a conversation with the superintendent and the gentleman that's in charge of our peg access uh, programming is going to be working with, um, I believe the gentleman's name is Bob Lathrow over at the school to put a program together, whereas the students can actually work for the town of Newbury in, um, doing all things peg access, filming, um, editing, doing things like that. And that is a legal expenditure of those funds. Everything was put on hold because of COVID. But, um, now that we also have a new IT director in place, and there was a meeting discussing the whole thing today. So it is moving forward, and we do expect to be using those funds, but as of today, we have, you know, almost a hundred thousand dollars sitting there, so um, we didn't feel it was necessary to present, um, another appropriation request at this time.
If, if I may say, if I may respond. The only thing I've seen is an email from the Department of Revenue, you keep on saying you have a legal opinion. You don't have a legal opinion, you have an email that on the bottom of the email states, this is not a legal opinion. So I don't know, and, and I'm really tired of hearing, oh, it's illegal, it's illegal. Every other community that has, um, you know, a, a, a multi- Every other community that has, you know, a multiple high school, they contribute and they use peg money. And I don't know why we can't, and I'll tell you why we can't, because we don't have the desire to be able to use this money, because as I said, it's going to be used for something else, but we haven't found out what that was or will be, other than town hall.
Because we have a regional school district that makes the rules a little bit.
Exactly. Currently, we don't have a legal mechanism to convey the money in that way. That's why the motion that was made at town meeting last spring was an illegal motion. We don't have that mechanism currently.
No, that is not the fact.
That's not the case.
That was voted down. I requested by a motion to hire an attorney and be able to get the motion and the vehicle. But the Board of Selectmen said no, they didn't want to hire an attorney to get all the paperwork in order and get our ducks in a row, so we could we could give this money to Triton so they could, in a pandemic, continue to improve their video, and the young people who were there can, you know, can get a good background in videography now. So it's the will of this board not to give this money, because I tried to by saying, hire an expert in this law, and it's, you people said no. So you don't want the school to get the money. So I don't know what else to do other than request more money.
So guys, real quickly, first of all, what Tracy said about Bob Lathrow runs an amazing program at Triton. I was with him for five to six years, okay? When I saw the money, they got, and one of his complaint was, they didn't have equipment for this generation because stuff was old. But they took the money from two years ago, which was, I think it was 50, maybe it was 60, I think we got up to 60 on town for a meeting, and they've got new computers, and they've got new headsets, and they've got new things so they could do football games and the thing, and that's what brings the student to life. And you people, you want to build your studio with the money. It's not a secret. You've wanted to do it for years. Okay, but the bottom line is, we have to fund Triton kids.
Oh, may I speak?
Yes, Alicia.
So being a past president of the Triton Regional Schools PTA, the whole school district is close to my heart. Oh, yeah, Jerry. So the the unfortunate situation that we find ourselves in in Newbury is that we are one of a regional school district. And I've had this conversation with Selectwoman Heavy in the past. We're not a city where we have a school line item budget. We are obligated under Massachusetts general laws to fund our school districts equally between the three towns. If the town of Newbury, out of the goodness of its heart, wanted to write a check to the Triton Regional School District, the Department of Revenue would disallow it. It is not allowed. There are other ways that we can fund the school, and the town administrator is working with the superintendent to try to have some programming that is beneficial to Newbury. The big crux of the problem is that the town of Newbury, through any of its funding, cannot provide programming for the town of Salisbury, the town of Rowley, the city of Boston, the city of Springfield. We cannot do it. We have a responsibility to the taxpayers and the citizens of Newbury. That's our purview.
First of all.
I'm not finished, Selectman Doyle.
And we're gonna wrap this up because we're going.
I want to respond.
The current budget that we have, this $95,000, does provide a $5,000 Triton education, Triton channel line item. Unfortunately, the pandemic hit, and everything at the Triton went homeschooling and everything stopped. The Department of Revenue is quite clear that we cannot provide anything for curriculum based, so although I would like to believe that Selectman Doyle and Selectman Heavy are doing this out of the goodness of their heart, unfortunately, it's not possible.
Can I ask, as in, can I ask?
This is not, this is not tax money. This is money paid by Comcast account people. And for you to say, you discourage, you discourage on Heavy and I all the time, and I've had enough.
We're getting into the weeds on this.
And it's also cable money. It's not tax dollars.
Jerry has a motion on the floor, we're gonna vote on it. Alicia Greco?
No.
Jeff Walker?
The motion is to amend and add this year from this budget another 95,000.
We know this, Jerry.
No, he just. Yeah, I'm answering his question.
Who's question?
Mine.
Oh.
I just want to make sure what I was voting for.
It's to amend it and add another 95 to give to the.
Now, one other, let me just interject something before we vote. If we were joined by the other two towns from their peg accounts, is it possible then? So that we made equal distributions to whether it's for all the students, because it is for all the students, then all three towns should be participating at the same level.
And again, that's why I motioned in the past to hire an attorney who specializes in cable TV law. Because our city attorney, her contract excludes her because this is a specialty. So nobody wanted to hire an attorney, so we have no answers. We're not able to resolve it, like most of the other towns that have regional schools that fund their schools.
Well, I'm not comfortable without the other three towns participating, so it would be a no for me.
Okay, Mike Doyle, vote.
I am comfortable supporting Triton newbie students, so it's a, I'm saying, I'm, yes, 100% yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
JR Colby, no. Is there a Finance Board number? Is the Finance Board?
Yeah. Can I ask a question?
Who asked?
This is Erica. Is this something that should be either discussed with the District's Communications Committee or the administration in future years, because the Triton budget has been voted? If there is a will for Triton to add to their budget ask, and it is supported by the three towns, we can then add money specifically to that line item. This was not discussed. I have sat through more than 10 hours of Triton budget and school committee meetings and district communications meetings this calendar year alone, and no one has come and brought this to the table. If I literally have a Triton High School sophomore sitting behind me doing homework, there was no request to increase the line item in this area for their TV station. If we could go about it that way, it would be funding from general government to give the support to the schools. I know that one of the challenges is that every year with the cost of education going up, people do not want to see the cost of education going up with the number of students going down. But that seems like it would be the proper way to know that there is a need and a request from Triton and to have it be fully funded by the three schools according to the regional agreement.
Well, can I speak to that, please?
Please.
I'd like to get to the roll on Article nine, because we're at eight o'clock now. And we're gonna get to a point, everyone's gonna brown out, and we'll have to drag this into another meeting.
But that was discussed with the superintendent, and he needs to do a supplemental budget for technology for all three towns, so that is in the works.
Okay, that I believe would be a great vehicle in order to show the support for our towns, fund this project, and do it in a manner that's legal and following the regional agreement.
Yeah, COVID got in the way.
Eric, thank you. Erica, thank you for clearing up my question.
We need a vote on Article nine as.
We voted, we already voted.
We voted on the motion that was on the table, but did we approve vote on Article nine as read?
I'm sorry, Chairman, you are absolutely correct.
There was no vote on the original.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we will move to a vote. Alicia?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
No.
Jerry Heavy?
No.
JR Colby, yes. Okay, FinCom? Okay. Having listened to all of the verbiage on that, any more, any comments from FinCom? Seeing none, let's vote through. Linda?
This thing doesn't let me unmute. I would say only that the way it's presented on the article.
Was that a yes?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
KB?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to authorize the for the following revolving funds pursuant to general law section, general law, chapter 44, section 53 and a half for the beginning July 1st, 2021, to be expended in accordance with the bylaws heretofore approved. Recreation revolving fund, $1,000 spending limit, municipal waterways improvement and maintenance fund, $55,000 spending limit. But take any other action in relation there to.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
I have my hand up on a question. You didn't see my hand up, Mr. Chair. Is the 50,000 on the recreational revolving fund, is that going to the basketball court?
No, that's to fund their annual operating budget.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Okay, FinCom, comments, discussion? Seeing none, Linda?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Tom?
Yes.
KB? Okay, I'll take that as a yes. Erica?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, KB. And Joe?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes as well. Let's go. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds, the following sums or any other sums enterprise salaries and wages, $96,710, $92,360, $12,000, dent service, $0.
Mr. Colby, fading in and out.
Please allow me to finish reading the article, Jerry.
Okay, but I'm just saying, you're fading in and out. People can't understand you. Just trying to help.
Jerry, we're doing the best we can here.
Just trying to help, Mr. Chair.
I have IT running cords. I've moved my station four times. I'm doing the best I can for you.
I know, I know, I just.
Please, if you could please sit back, relax for a couple seconds, and I will read the motion, then we can all wrangle over it. So I will start over.
Thank you.
Article 11, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds, the following sums or any other sums to operate the ambulance enterprise. Salaries and wages, $96,710, $92,360. Capital outlay, $12,000. $0. Insurance, $5,000. $1,800. Indirect costs, $59,046. Ordinary and unforeseen, $12,000. Prior deficit, $0. Total of $278,616,000. That $278,616 be raised as follows, departmental receipts, $616. Any other action in relation there to?
Move to accept.
Second. Second question? Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
JR Colby, yes. Any comments from FinCom? Okay, Linda?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Erica?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes on that. Okay. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available fund, the sum of $4,895 to pay the following outstanding bill from fiscal year 2020.
Motion to.
Incorporated 4,800. Please allow me to finish reading the.
I'm sorry, Chairman.
Okay, if we all follow Robert's rules, we'll have a smooth meeting.
There's a motion, I'll make it.
I made a motion to accept.
All right, I'll second it.
Discussion? Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. Any questions or comments from the Finance Committee? None? Okay, Linda?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
KB?
Yes.
Okay. Erica?
Yes.
And Joe?
Joe's a yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes as well. Okay. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $6,472.61 or any other sum from the receipts reserved for appropriation account.
Motion to approve.
Or take any other action in relation there to.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Jerry?
What is this being spent for?
What was the question?
What is this money being used for?
This money would be moved into the town hall project account.
So it's not for an old bill or anything like that?
No, we're on Article 13.
I know. It just seems like it was a specific amount. I assumed it was for a bill or some outstanding debt.
Tracy, would you please explain to us where this particular figure is derived from?
Sure, that's the balance of the bond premium on the police station project. And basically, when your market price is above face value, you get a premium on your bonds, and there was a balance left over after we paid all the bond issuance costs.
Thank you, Tracy. Any other discussion on Article 13?
My feeling is that this money should, we've got to start putting money into a town hall account. We don't even know where we're going yet. Put it in general funds for now, and like I said, and we'll fund the town hall when it comes time.
If it's unspent at the end of the year, doesn't it end up in?
General funds, doesn't it?
No.
Any other question? Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
No.
Jerry Heavy?
No.
JR Colby, yes. Okay, FinCom, any questions, comments? Seeing none. Linda?
Yes.
Yes.
Gene, okay. Tom?
Yes.
KB?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
And Joe?
Joe's a yes.
Okay, and I'll put a yes in there as well, okay? Okay, Article 14, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $574,000, 574,323, 50, or any other sum from the overlay surplus to the town hall project.
Sorry, yeah, motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'm gonna say, why don't we start a fund for the Council of Aging? Because it's another building we have to deal with, but we just keep taking all this money and just keep putting it into the town hall fund. We got, my personal, I think the Council of Aging is more important right now.
Selectman Colby, Chairman Colby, may I make a comment?
Yes.
Did either of my two colleagues in the select board read the budget message that was provided by the town administrator?
Excuse me, that's very insulting, Mrs.
Did you read it? Did you miss the part? Did you miss the part where the rationale was why we have this town hall account? Because you don't want to fund it.
But I don't agree with it. But I don't agree with it.
You don't agree with it?
No.
Please, may we move on without an inhumane attack?
Yeah, we don't need the comments from the peanut gallery.
Okay, Mike? One more time, and I'm going to close this meeting, and we're going to have to do all this over again.
Yeah, one second, can I have one second? Which every moment, Jay, either selectman, either I talk, Ms. Greco has a comment.
She asked a question.
She has comments, though, degrading comments to the two select people. She does it all the time.
Mike, we've listened to a lot of comments from a lot of people tonight, that's what.
All right, let's, we'll get. We'll get through it.
Okay. I want to engage in a little dialogue about this. I'm proud that we set up this account several years ago. We actually have Damon Jesposin to thank for this. Saving money is not something to be ashamed of. The people of this town, I think, should be proud that we've been able to set this amount of money aside and to push it around or peddle it away, and take it out of that account, and then in a year or two or less, come back to the taxpayers and ask for an override to fund the entire project, to me, would seem very disingenuous. I'm proud we've been able to save this amount of money. It's a reflection of fiscal responsibility, projects coming in underbid, in, in just good financial housekeeping. That's how I feel about it.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'd like to just say, as one of the selectmen that have been here long enough to remember when we were close to eight hundred thousand dollars in debt, and we really didn't know what the next step was, and we had buildings and disrepair and everything else, it feels good to be able to put money aside, you're going to have to rent money one way or another, and it really feels really good to be part of a fiscally sound town with relatively low tax rates that has reserves, that is able to do this, and we're triple A bonded, we should actually be very proud.
I'll move to a roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
No.
Jerry Heavy?
No.
JR Colby, yes.
Okay, from the Finance Committee, comments, discussion? None? Okay, I'm, I'm going to weigh in here a little bit, just from the finance end, because putting reserves away is responsible not only for municipalities, but for businesses and other organizations as well. And so, the fact that we have the ability to do this will pay dividends in the future, and so I think it is sound fiscal policy that we are following. And I, I think it's just a, a good idea for the town. So, let's go through with the vote, Linda?
Yes, I think it's a good idea, too.
Jean?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kavy?
Yes.
Erica?
Absolutely, yes.
Joe?
Yes, and I agree.
Thank you. I'm a yes, okay. Continue.
Okay, Article fifteen, see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of one million, five hundred thousand dollars, or any other sum from free cash to the Town Hall project account, or act in relation there to.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, I'll move to a roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Absolutely.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
No.
Jerry Heavy?
No.
JR Colby, a resounding yes.
FinCom, any comments or discussion?
I would say this, to be able to see an amount in free cash, to be able to transfer over and not be put on any future overrides going out to the taxpayer is a huge step in the right direction, that we're able to use this money towards the projects we know are looming in our future. This is so far, I'm nodding with Jeff as remembering that's how I got involved in this more than eleven years ago, was when there was a budget crisis. I believe Tracy got her job offer about ten years ago, and I was at the Board of Selectmen meeting at the old there, I think this is a tremendous step forward, and think that it's a great investment in this town, and putting us in the right step forward, so.
Linda?
I agree.
Jean?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kavy? Okay, Erica was a yes.
Absolutely.
And Joe?
Joe was a yes.
And I'm a yes as well.
Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of one hundred thousand dollars, or any other sum from the stabilization fund, to make repairs to the Newbury Elementary School roof, or act in relation there to.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, I'll move to a roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Yes.
JR Colby, yes.
Hey, FinCom, any comments? Okay, Linda?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kavy?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
And Joe?
Joe's a yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes as well. Okay.
Okay, Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of thirteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars, or any other sum from the stabilization fund, to purchase a lawnmower, or act in relation there to.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Discussion? I didn't. I'm kidding, I'm kidding, what brand is it?
It's a Don Deere.
Yeah, hopefully it's green and yellow.
Yeah, it is.
All right. Any, any other discussion? Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes.
FinCom? Comments? Okay, Linda?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kavy? I'll take that as a yes. Erica?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes as well, go ahead.
Okay. Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of fifty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars, or any other sum from the stabilization fund to purchase a duck truck, or act in relation there to.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
JR Colby, yes.
Okay, comments from FinCom?
The only comment I have, Marshall, is I talked to Jamie, I saw the equipment that they use, and the light that they get out of this stuff, and the appreciation that they have for the equipment that they have. They do certainly get ample light by their equipment, and it's just a pleasure to know that they appreciate what they get, and they respect what they use.
Yeah, I've been down there as well, and they, they do take good care of it, and, and make it last longer than I would have expected. So. Linda?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kavy?
Yes.
All right. Erica?
Yes.
And Joe? Joe? Yes, okay, got it, Joe. All right, thank you.
Yes.
Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of five thousand dollars, or any other sum from free cash to fund a Newbury celebration event, or act in relation there to.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Roll call, any discussion? Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes.
Okay, from the Finance Committee, any comments, discussion? Linda?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kavy?
Yes.
Yeah. Erica?
Yes.
And Joe?
Joe's a yes.
Okay. And yes for me as well.
Okay, Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer the.
No, we did nineteen.
We did nineteen. What are the bylaws?
Okay, good, the bylaws, we're going to take up, I believe, the hearings are at the end of the month, and we will vote after those, is that correct?
The wetlands and the zoning, you're going to wait until the end of the public hearing, so you'll have their final language, and the Select Board is scheduled to meet on the thirtieth.
Okay.
For final approval and execution of the warrant.
Did by the wetlands, by law. Unintended. Okay, so that brings us to twenty-four, someone correct?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Okay, to see if the town will vote to petition the General Court to amend chapter four sixty of the Acts of two thousand eight, an act establishing a selectman administrator form of government for the town of Newbury. Title of Board of Selectmen, the selectmen shall be changed to Select Board throughout the Act. Section thirteen, the following change shall be made, the title Town Planner shall be changed to Planning Director. And section fifteen, section fifteen, changes will be made to the article, which is striked and underlined. At the last day of March, the Town Administrator shall submit in writing to the Board of Selectmen a careful detailed estimate of the probable expenditures of the town government for the ensuing fiscal year, stating the amount required to meet the interest in maturing bonds and notes, or other outstanding indebtedness of the town, and showing specifically the amount necessary to be provided for each fund and department together, with the statement of the expenditures of the town for the same purposes in the preceding year, and an estimate of the expenditures for the current year. The Town Administrator shall also submit a statement showing all revenues received by the town in the preceding fiscal year, together with an estimate of the receipts of the current year, and an estimate of the amount of income from all sources of revenue exclusive of taxes upon property in the ensuing year. The Town Administrator shall report the probable amount required to be levied and raised by the taxation to defray all expenses and liabilities of the town. For the purposes of enabling the Town Administrator to make up the annual estimates of expenditures, all boards, offices, and committees of the town shall, during the first week of January, furnish all information in their possession, and submit in writing to the Town Administrator a detailed estimate of the appropriations required for the efficient and proper conduct of their respective departments during the next fiscal year. In section sixteen, the following changes shall be made. Omit on or before the seventy-fifth day before the annual town meeting, the Board of Selectmen shall transmit a copy of the budget, together with its recommendation relative thereto, to each member of the Finance Committee, or take any action relative thereto. I'd like to entertain a motion, and then ask a Town Administrator for clarification on articles, the sections of Article twenty-one, to start off, and then we will move into discussion. Article twenty-one. So. Do, do we have a motion? So we can get to discussion.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Second.
Okay, Tracy, would you like to hit on some of the, the points of this?
Sure, this was brought to my attention. I honestly hadn't really read the Town, the Select Board Town Administrator Act in many years, and it was brought to my attention this past budget cycle. We do not, and we have not, I don't think we've ever, to my knowledge, myself or my predecessor, adhered to the dates as they are established here. I'm not sure who wrote it, or what the thinking was behind it, but what we, the changes here, obviously, Select Board, we've, we've changed the title, so there's a number of title changes to reflect the actual positions that we have here in town. And then, on the section fifteen, we just made it reflect what we actually do, the process that we actually follow with those dates. And then, the final section sixteen, in practice, what we do is the Finance Committee and the Select Board work parallel, really, they have the documents at the same time you have, so it's not like you're reviewing it, and when you finalize it, then you pass it on to them, I forget how many days it says here. We, we just don't follow that model, we never have.
Okay, thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, I'll go to a roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
JR Colby, yes.
Okay, from the Finance Committee, I'm going to start off with a comment, because while this is not a money vote per se, it is our process, and as such, I think we, we have the right to weigh in on the change in our process. So, Linda?
Works for me.
Okay. Jean?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kavy?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes as well.
Okay, we will move on to Article twenty-four. See if the town will vote to adopt slash re-adopt and accept the provisions of section twenty of chapter thirty-two B of Massachusetts General Laws, is amended by section fifteen of chapter two hundred and eighteen of the Acts of two thousand sixteen, establishing an other post-employment benefits liability trust fund to authorize the Board of Selectmen and Treasurer to execute the declaration of trust, creating an expendable trust for the purpose of holding monies appropriated to such fund, to make the Treasurer as the trustee of such trust, and to authorize the transfer of any and all monies currently held for the purpose of paying retiree health and life benefits of such trust, and to authorize the trustee to invest and reinvest the monies in such fund accordance with the prudent investor rule, established under chapter two oh three C of the Massachusetts General Laws, or take any other action in relation there to.
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, I will move to a roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes.
Comments from Finance Committee? Jean?
Yes. I don't think we had a chance to discuss this. Can we get some background? Tracy?
Yep. Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
This is simply the account, the trust fund account that's established under the general laws, that we deposit the OPEB money into. Currently, we're working with a company called Bartholomew, who advises us within the legal, the Massachusetts legal list of investments that municipalities are allowed to contribute to. So this is just the, the legal trust fund account. And there were some changes as a result of the Municipal Modernization Act, because you may recall, we adopted it once previously, but now, with the changes, we need to re-adopt.
So it's, it's just keeping with the change.
Yep.
One more question. The treasurer they speak of here, is this our town treasurer?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from FinCon? Seeing none, we'll vote on Article twenty-three. Linda?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kaby?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Okay, JR?
Okay, Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to amend the Newbury general bylaws by adding a new Chapter eight, Council on Aging. It follows. Establishment, there's hereby establish a council on aging for the purpose of coordinating and carrying out programs designed to meet the problem of the aging in coordination with programs of the Department of Elder Affairs pursuant to general law, section forty, Chapter forty, section eight B. Said council shall consist of up to nine residents appointed by the Select Board each for a term of three years on a staggered basis, so that one such member's term expires each year. What's on aging shall annually choose a chairman and other such officers as it deems appropriate. Regulations in operation. Council may adopt regulations from time to time in order to carry out the purposes of this chapter, which are not inconsistent here with or take any other action relative here to...
Motion to accept is read, has read?
Second.
Chairman Colby?
Yes.
In eight-two, line two, I believe that when you have nine residents serving three years, three come up every time for election, not one.
Yeah. I will fix that, thank you.
The background behind this is, basically, we discovered that the Council on Aging was never one hundred percent correctly established.
Okay.
That's, I just, it was just a...
Like, we're doing the right thing.
Right, twenty years later, we're doing the right thing.
Oh, good lord.
Okay, any other discussion? I'll move to a roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Absolutely.
Mike Doyle?
Definitely, yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes.
Other comments from FinCon? Linda?
Yes.
Jean has stepped away. Tom?
Yes.
Kaby?
Yes.
Okay. Erica?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
I'm a yes, and when Jean comes back, we'll ask him. Okay.
Out of twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to accept the provision of general law, Chapter fifty-nine, section five K, to establish to allow persons over the age of sixty to volunteer to provide services to such city or town. In exchange for such volunteer services, the city or town shall reduce the real property tax obligations of such persons over the age of sixty on her or his tax bills. And any reduction so provided shall be in addition to any exemption or abatement to which any person is otherwise entitled. And no such person shall receive a rate of, be credited, more than the current minimum wage of the Commonwealth per hour for services provided pursuant to reduction, nor shall the reduction of the real property tax bill exceed fifteen hundred dollars in a given tax year, or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Discussion?
It's a great idea.
Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes.
Smart. On the FinCon, any questions, comments?
Is this, this isn't, is this something new, or are we just getting it, like, codified?
We've had the program for many years, we're just doing a little housekeeping.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to make sure, because I was just looking at, like, what the minimum wage was and how many hours that translates out to, so, okay, thank you.
Okay. Jean, while we have you here, on Article twenty-four, how did you vote? Or how will you vote?
It's not here, so I can't vote.
Okay, we'll just leave that blank. Okay. All right, so, any comments on Article twenty-five, discussion, questions? Hearing none, let's go through, Linda?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Okay, Tom?
Yes.
Kaby?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Joe?
Oh, yes.
Okay, and I'll be a yes as well. Okay.
Article twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to approve the updated and amended Triton Regional School Agreement, a copy of which file with the Office of the Town Clerk, to take any other action relative thereto.
Motion to accept.
Okay.
Discussion?
This was, this is something that we've already seen this, and it's was somehow got missed last time, and it's gonna be on here, so it's just cosmetic changes, it's nothing of substance.
Call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes.
Okay, from the Finance Committee, Erica, have you got anything on this one?
I hadn't seen that this was on, it hasn't been discussed at DCC at all in recent meetings.
It was discussed, I'm sorry, I can discuss last year.
That's what I was thinking.
It just missed our, our annual town meeting, so we have to do it again this year.
Gotcha.
It's already been approved and rallied against, sorry.
Yeah.
And the changes were really pretty minimal. Vote bias, doesn't it?
As I say, I don't think we weigh in on this one.
It's not, even though it does affect Finance, but... So we'll let this one be a will of the town.
Okay. Well, folks, we did it.
Yes. Thank you very much for coming.
Tracy has something to say. Just one other thing I wanted to make the board aware of. Thursday, last Thursday, the Newbury Recreation Commission Committee took bids for the second time on the basketball courts. Both times, the bids, the low bids, were significantly higher than we had, what we had appropriated originally. So in conversations with the chairman, he asked if consideration could be given to put, understanding that it's late, but if there would be consideration given to putting an article on requesting fifty thousand dollars.
More?
I'm sorry?
More?
Fifty thousand dollars from free cash. Because the timing of the warrant is so close, that they put it on, they're gonna continue their fundraising efforts, but they felt that they were really hampered by COVID. The problem is, if we don't accept, then we're gonna be forced to push it out again, go out to bid again, and I think it was the youth league, the Triton Youth Sports, that have a deadline, that they're gonna pull back their donation if they don't complete the project by the end of October. And their donation was, I believe, ten thousand dollars, so... So you can still consider it for your meeting on the thirtieth, but I just wanted to let you know that that request has been made.
Chairman Colby?
With the board, is the feeling that the board would like to vet this tonight, or if there's time, do we table it for now?
Chairman Colby, I would make a motion to table it, it's like, I think we have to talk to some of our constituents before we do this.
Okay, if we take it up, if we take it up at our next meeting, there's still time, correct, Tracy?
On the thirtieth, yes. Yep, the thirtieth, we have to...
Making motion to, I'll make a motion to move this till our next meeting, to make, to make a decision.
And...
And I'll, and I'll second that.
Jerry?
Yeah, thank you. And this is because the bids are coming in too high, correct?
Correct. It's the proposal that was presented at the town meeting that was approved, and I believe, you know, it was before Capital Planning Committee and was approved, but the bids, they went out a second time in hopes of maybe, you know, getting something lower, but they both were significantly...
Tracy, should someone come in from the Rec Committee on the thirtieth and talk to us?
Chairman Valpon suggested that he would be happy to come in and speak with the board.
What about the Finance Committee?
Absolutely.
Yeah, you mean Marshall, have him come before you guys, too?
Well, he's been before us, and I happen to know what's going on, because I've got contacts and people in work that we do in construction, and the cost of materials for construction has gone through the roof.
It has.
Because of COVID. And so I suspect that this is largely the problem with this particular project. It just is one of those unfortunate things that has come down the pike with, with COVID. I know some of the materials that we look at have gone up in the past year four hundred percent. So it's...
Marshall, if we hadn't finished the police station, when we did, we'd have been in real trouble.
Real trouble, yeah.
So...
So do you want the chairman to come to your next FinCon meeting, or are we, are we meeting as a group on the thirtieth?
Is going to be after, after your meeting. I think, I think we just have, if we could come in and arrange to be at least the start of the meeting for this particular article or this particular request, I think that would facilitate getting everything done at the same time.
I think we can do that.
On the thirtieth.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, I'll move to a roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
JR Colby, yes.
Okay, then...
And this is, what's the motion?
He tabled it to the thirtieth of March.
Okay, so we're not part of that.
Correct, okay.
Marshall, are we scheduling a meeting for that day?
We will be scheduling a meeting for that day, and what I'd appreciate if we could be early on the agenda, so that we can get FinCon in and out.
Good, that's a good, a good idea.
All right, thanks to our FinCon members for joining us tonight. Still have some...
Always a pleasure to see them.
Still, still, like, man's business to attend to after this. You folks need to close the portion of the meeting?
We can take a vote to adjourn, the FinCon meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Over the paper?
Dear folks? Have a good day.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you, I'll have a great night.
Bye, everybody.
Night. Nice job, Erica.
Take care.
Linda?
Go wash hands.
Me?
Moving on. We have a notice of deficiency, notice of intent to sell Chapter sixty-one A property, sixty-eight Green Street. Hit on the, find the point, Tracy.
I'm sorry.
And I can, I can answer the basic whys. A notice of... A notice of intent to sell Chapter sixty-one A property at sixty-eight Green Street was submitted. The notice was deficient, and what we need is a a motion that the notice of intent to sell that was received is insufficient. We would need a motion to send Eva Jackman a notice of deficiency. And we would need a motion to have the chair sign the notice.
Chairman Colby, quick question, I'm tired, I'm sorry, why was it...
If, can we, can we start with a motion, then we'll get to discussion.
Sorry, okay, sorry. Motion to discuss.
No, I move that we send a letter of deficiency.
First, you have to make a motion that the notice that you received from Ms. Jackman is insufficient. So that's the first motion.
Okay, so I move the notice we received from Ms. Jackman is insufficient.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Okay, can, somebody explain quickly why it's, I'm sorry, I haven't read this part of it yet, I'm sorry, I didn't get there.
I, I can explain if you want.
Thank you, please, somebody.
Um, with your permission, Mr. Colby?
Yes.
Okay. The land is classified sixty-one A, which means it's taxed as agricultural land. Yeah. So when, when the person who owns it is going to sell it, they have to send a letter indicating that they intend to sell, and they have to attach a lot of things, like the description, the purchase and sale. And the whole purpose of this is to give the town notice, because the town has a one hundred and twenty day option to buy the property if the town so chooses. So by sending, by saying, gee, thanks for the notice, but you didn't get, you didn't cross your Ts and dot your Is, it, it stops that hundred and, hundred and twenty day that we have to respond whether or not we're gonna buy, buy the land. So that's, that's, that's the, the reason behind this.
Thanks, Jerry.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
The only other discussion that I might have, if the Jackmans need any help, we have someone, obviously, that could give them a little advice, right? We, Tracy shaking her head, and that's good, so they could, they can get ahold of Tracy or Martha or someone to give them a little help.
Kindness can be provided, for sure. Okay, roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. And we would need motion to send the notice of deficiency.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. And we would need a motion to have the chair sign the notice.
Motion to let the chair sign the notice.
Second.
Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
JR Colby, yes. Now, if, do we still have Chief Lucy? We do, he's diligent, that Chief Lucy.
All right, yeah, before I go, before I go through this, we've got a few things to talk, does anybody need a bathroom break or anything?
Actually, I do.
Why don't we, why don't we take one?
Okay, let's, we'll, let's suspend for two minutes, if that's...
Five, can we have five?
Well, three.
Okay.
In pro, pat in pro pound, that's me.
I think we can roll into our emergency management...
All right, I'm gonna really tear it down, so, I'm not gonna make it short and sweet. So, good news is, as of the last report, we're down to the gray area, which is, we're down to a one-point fourteen percent positive test of the eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven test given over the last fourteen days. So this is the first time, long time, we've been actually solid in the gray, which is good. I'm also getting reports that the majority of the senior citizens have been vaccinated, and COA Director Cindy Carrier continues to facilitate assistance for those still seeking the vaccination. So if he's out there, she's available, she's, she's working very closely with our health agent, Deb Rogers, to make sure that, that vulnerable populace is getting taken care of. A health agent, Deb Rogers, and by Chief Jambur continue to facilitate the regional area clinics. Uh, these clinics have efficiently administered twelve hundred doses last Saturday and twelve hundred doses last Sunday. And they would continue that trend and continue that, uh, aggressive, um, distribution. And for as long as it's, uh, it's first of all facilitated through the state and as long as it's needed by our citizenry. Uh, the next group to be, uh, open up to be is the essential workers. I'm not going to get into the list of who the essential workers are. It's very, very, uh, listed very detailed on the state, uh, website. So, uh, it's that same link that I keep on pushing on the, uh, on the town's website. I'm encouraging people to go on that website, get the latest and greatest and also to get the, uh, the, the vaccination, um, get on, get on board with the vaccination appointments. Um, our regional clinics, uh, will be posting, uh, the appointments and also the DoubleTree endeavors, I'm hearing, has been very, very effective, uh, in getting these things out there. And lastly, uh, I'm, I'm glad to say we're in discussion and tentatively planning to reopen town offices. And we're hoping for May fourth, which is a Monday. So that's a, we're striving for that. Of course, it's a moving target because who knows how things are going to be. But the trend is looking really, really promising for us and for everybody. And so we're very optimistic that, uh, things will be back to normal, at least for the town offices. Um, and getting people back in the office and we're looking at May fourth. And that, my friends, will be my report.
John, and that might be a question that's going to be answered by Tracy, too. Are we projecting to have like our select board meetings now in, in person by then?
I don't think so. I, I, you know, I don't think so. We're still looking at, uh, whether or not, uh, it's going to be full. I, I'm hoping, but I think it's too early to say. I'd like to have a couple more weeks to see how things unfold with the state and the availability. I, I, I don't think I'm ready to say we'll be one hundred percent normal on that yet, but I'm optimistic that maybe. So there's a definite maybe for you, sir.
Oh, can I ask a question, too?
Sure.
Are the plans, what are the plans for the library? Are they going to follow the schools or are they going to follow the town? Or is that you need to do some homework on that?
Yeah, yeah, again, this is, there's still some discussion that's going to be happening. Um, it's, I'd like it to follow the school. I mean, everything's looking like it's trending towards opening up fully. Uh, and I'm hoping that that's going to include everything that's, you know, including with our operations. Um, it's looking really good, but to sit here and say absolutely that's what's happening, it's really hard without a little bit more time and a little bit more, uh, flavor from what the state is saying as far as, you know, what's available for the vaccinations, you know, with the trending, if it continues the way it's going. If there's a lot of confidence there, which right now is enough confidence to, to say that we're looking like, uh, May, May fourth. I hope that answers the question.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Tracy, you ready for the administrator's report?
I actually don't have one.
Oh, okay. Um, under old business, we have none. We received correspondence from Xfinity regarding the annual notice of Comcast policies and procedures. And we got an email from Dana Packer regarding money set aside for future COA Town Hall project. Do we have any meeting updates?
I gave my meeting update from the MMA meeting.
And I gave mine earlier. All right, we have meeting minutes to approve tonight.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. Uh, we have warrants tonight.
Move to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes. And I'll make a motion to let the chairman sign them.
JR Colby, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Is there a, uh, is there a second to Mike's?
Second, Mike.
All right, roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
JR Colby, yes.